Discuss this a little bit further when we get to the data on the outcome. I'd like to call to order the Go to Devastate Workshop for August 1st, 2007. I believe that it is 7:04. And first on the agenda tonight is a presentation by Mr. Elder regarding Park Recreation Survey. I believe all of you have received a copy of it and taken a look before you got it. And pass it to you.
I also, I'll give you the, I'll give you a copy and show you as well. There are actually two things I emailed you. One was the brochure, the other one was the survey.
Sure.
So the mayor asked me to go take, I mean, write, take updated pictures of Lomarette and Shansley. Brochure you have is a better picture than that.
Yeah.
Now, the brochure is relatively old. It's something that we did.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get it too. I'm sorry. So.
Good, good.
So, the, if you don't want to just start with the brochure first, so what we did in the past is when we came in for the, when we came in for the brochure, and we've had this looked at a couple of times, but we always ask the board permission to have them copied because it's, the village is copier, so it should be the board's decision about whether or not to allow them to be copied. So assuming that you're okay with this, I'd ask you to give me approval to do thirty copies. And we put some in Village Hall, then we would do is we went out in the past, I'm not going to do as many as we used to, someone like a person, but we went out in the past and put them in other key locations in the village and town. Like we had some up at the Town Rec Department, we had some at the business, some businesses that will allow us to at the village, we had some at Hagan Roans for a while, so that there's a.
Chamber.
Chamber, that's a good, that's good. We did have one in Chamber, I forgot about that. And that way people can actually have access to them in different places. So we can, because the whole idea here is to market our parks. So, so that's what I'd be asking you for, if you could consider giving me permission to make, get copies for them, if you had any corrections to it as well.
Well, that's the way we used to always do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I need some for historic preservation too. We are out and need copies.
So do you have any thoughts about the brochure that I can correct, or?
No, I think it goes through, I think it goes through the parks that we have. I think that it would be something that the, is it the Historic Commission that if a new family moves in to one of the homes, I don't know if it's just specifically to those that are on that list or whatever, but I know that there was a package or something that was provided.
We used to give.
We used to, but we, they stopped that.
Well, but we're trying to get that started again, and it may not be as expansive, but I think any new homeowner in the village needs to have this.
That's what I.
And we did that before the passage.
Historic preservation was doing that.
But this kind of stuff, and we got, we got bogged down in historic preservation about what house, what houses we would do, how we would get the information, so.
Exactly.
We need to unbog it and then we can.
Yeah, we're doing.
Then we can get the, we can get a.
Later we turn it over to Parks and Rec and have Parks and Rec, if a house was, that they, that it would be sent to them or given to them. Unless you guys do a package, unless.
Should be, should be a package.
We have a proper package.
Okay.
Yeah. Of Parks and Rec information and village information that is all in one.
Yeah, my thought was the village has a really good choir, and I noticed they still, they still have it, it's, it's a one that was produced like, I don't know, fifteen years ago, but they've kept it very updated, it's in Village Hall, because I did a great job there. And so what we do is we could just hand out that brochure with the parks brochure and HBC brochure, three pieces of information, easy to read, they're all, they're all digestible, and they're all useful for people who have various different, whatever they want to learn. So they want to learn about village services, they can look at the village one, if they want to know about the parks, they can look at that one, if they want to know about, you know, the historic homes or the businesses, they can look at that one.
Webster trails?
Yeah, we don't really have a, we don't have, we don't have a trail map in our own, but they'd have to go, I mean, long, long run, we would love to have a web presence and then we could start to, like that.
Yes, yes.
So we could show how the village trails connect with the town trails, which connect to the ones in Penfield, which, you know, the whole east side now is, is pretty connected. So you can, in theory, you go from the lake down to Victor. You can't really.
Would you want more than thirty?
It depends on.
So that they're available to.
Would you be comfortable?
Put it to a packet.
Would you be comfortable with letting me do fifty?
I would, yeah, I would prefer a fifty or sixty, because I want to get them disseminated out again the way we used to.
Okay.
And then I want to be able to have enough that we're comfortable with the new families, because we've got a lot of sales going on.
Who sent the tag?
Well, that's, we, we have to do, we have to, we have to do a tag, tag in on this. We have to figure out who's responsible for these kind of things, because even with HBC, the problem is, we have, we've always had this issue of who does it? You know, is it, is it Sue, is it the chair, is it who's doing it? So it has to be, there has to be, you know, there has to be some person ultimately responsible for collecting the data and then getting it out there. And this may not be more diff, this may not be more difficult to just drop it off, this may not be.
Exactly.
We're not talking, we're talking a 1.1 square mile village here, we don't have a lot of.
Well, honest to God, I mean, we used to walk up and knock on the door, shake your hand to hear some information, and that's how we did it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like you're getting forty sales a week or anything.
Right, I mean, if it happens to be.
It used to be like, you have to be home coming.
We will miss, we will miss some people, like, we cannot, there's no way to, there's no way that I know how to get data on who's moving into my apartments.
Yes.
There's, there's data on where houses sell, there's data on new registrations, but that's about all I, I'm aware of, so.
And otherwise.
So, you know. Do you get, do you get information on new, um, new homes? You do, see, there's one right there.
Welcome wagon, that sort of thing.
Yeah, and there used to be a welcome wagon, but they've kind of stopped.
We got one.
So, they send out coupons now, still, but they don't really send out municipal information as much. All right, so I guess if you're okay with fifty, I said, I was, I wasn't, I wasn't going to ask what we're up with, but if you're okay with fifty, then I would, then I'd like to, then I could do fifty, pull back twenty, and then use those to send out to our first twenty.
Say forty-nine, but I'm not okay with fifty.
All right, forty-nine.
On our website.
Yeah, well, yeah, in the long run, I'd like to see like a little page that pops up with all the park stuff on it, but I wasn't.
You should be able to look to the link.
I wasn't going to run that right now. I was going to just, I'm starting small, but, you know, I wanted to start quick. I wanted to hit this running, but I wanted to, but I've got, the idea would be to have a, you know, a dropdown on the village and then have, have all the parks, have this basically in a different format on the, because we don't even have, we don't have to do the brochure on here, now we can redo this as a poster, and this happens, you can read down through. Literally, you know, someone would just click on it, they'd see the parks, they'd have the explanation on the side, they just move, move down through the text. So, the whole, that whole click and, click and download thing, people just don't want to do it anymore.
So why you're up there?
Fifty.
Yeah. If you decided you want to, Parks and Rec meetings are going to be?
Um, I was thinking of talking to you about that. Now we have something to talk about.
Okay, so fifty brochures, that's good.
Yep.
I'll agree.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question for you also, looking at Hilton Case Park, and this would go to maybe you and also to Jake or Jim. The trails through Hilton Case Park, have they been cleared this spring, this summer? Are they walkable? They used to be, I don't know if they are now. Used to take wood chips and all that and put them down there that we had in the village?
It's a very wet area normally in the middle of the summer, and even with this wet year, it's way too sunny to get back there still without tearing it up even worse. So we haven't spread any chips yet this year, so whatever was there from previous years is out there. But we were sinking in, I remember doing it part of an Eagle Sound project and sinking in with the gator back there, and that was, I want to say that was July, you're going, Ian Fike, I think it was.
Yep.
Ethan or Ian Fike?
He put up those, he, they put up plaques to trees.
Yeah. We, we did do wood chips on there, so we have not spread any additional wood chip yet this year.
My question, I guess, would pertain to the fact that we had that windstorm, I don't know if anybody's been through there since then, whether there are trees down across the trails, going back with the chainsaw, cutting, taking them off.
I was there. Yeah, shortly after the windstorm, I walked through there, and we were looking for that particular thing in hazard trees, and I didn't notice any trees at that time down across the trail. I mean, there's little, any little sticks and things that could kick out of the way as you're walking through, but we could certainly.
Put it on there.
It would be able to go through there, I mean, I remember the last time. Now, was it right after the windstorm? There wasn't much damage?
Okay, I just want to make sure that they're walkable, you know, that we can get through, whether there's chips on them or not. Walking through the town trails, there aren't any chips there. Couple of wooden bridges across, running streams or.
Jake, is the, is the, I didn't, I didn't go down there recently, I'll have to take a trip down, is there, there's a map, is there? You know, we used to come in from South Avenue, I think, South Avenue, yeah, used to be a little display that had the trail map there, is that still there?
It, it was there.
Okay.
Before, I don't believe that there was one tree that popped down on the other end. I don't believe it came down with that, but not to say somebody didn't destroy it two minutes after we left there, so.
Okay, well, I mean, I was over there, I have a copy of that map, too. I took a picture of it long ago, so if we lost it, if we lost it, I have it.
Yeah, I've got a copy, the file in the back, too, is like an eleven, I think it's eleven, May seventeen copy.
Yeah.
Just like a school on that.
I'd like to ask a question first.
Sure.
What is the condition of all of these parks? If you don't thought, I mean.
Well, like, when we have our.
filled with wood chips, like you said, or?
When we have our first parks meeting, I was going to ask our liaison to allow me to have a form that we could use to just block the parks, not to harass, not to harass Jake at all, just.
I think Jake is a liaison.
Just to, he has to be there, he's supposed to be there, but.
Supposed to be there for what?
We have, we have a parks meeting, you're supposed to be there, and it's according to the, the right.
Yeah, at the parks, at the parks meeting, but the guy's historically been at the walkthroughs because.
No.
And I think it's, but you guys can harass better if I'm not there. And you're playing together.
I don't want to like, our point is not to, yeah. So what I was, what I was going to do is I was going to standardize the whole thing, so we could have like a form that we have for each park, and just go through, and that way if we, that way we can just give our comments, and Jake can say, that's nuts, or I've already done that, or whatever, so, I mean, that's my, that was my.
So Parks and Rec needs to visit all of these and check the conditions?
Right, but it's, right, I'm going to, don't worry, I mean, my whole point was to get going and then I'll keep going, so. But there's only me, sorry now, so it's going to be, you know, I got to come up with new things and go back and look what the old things were and figure out an improvement, so. Because I didn't like the fact that before we did the Park Rock Creek, we didn't have, you know, objective way to do it, because it's not fair to him. Because what happened was, kind of, they got kind of like, well, how come there's not a swing there? Well, we shouldn't be doing it that way, we should be looking at what they look like and then, and then asking Jake before we make that even an issue, you know, because sometimes the stuff is just, somebody tore down the swing yesterday, it's not, not that it wasn't there, it's just not there now, so. People do weird things. There was one time where we had a swing that somebody wrapped around the top pole over and over and over again, so. Which took some work.
It just happened last week.
Oh, it just happened last week? Yeah. And that's not easy to do. I mean, and you got to sit there, you got to stand there a while and just keep flopping it over.
So I'll just take a certain level of petticoat game.
So, um, so are you okay with me doing this copy? Okay, good, that's good.
Fifty, we'll do.
All right, fifty, we'll do. All right, so the other thing that I put together was a park survey. Now, we did a park survey, I think about 2008, so, which I really didn't, I really don't think it's the right format, it's too long. So this would be a card format, and you could ignore the little, little light marks on there, those are just cut marks, so I know where, but I know how to cut it. The, so the, what it would be is the address part, which is this part here, would be for people who want to mail it back, but they wouldn't have to. And the, this should not be, the return address should not be up here, it would be down here. So just, there's one error there. So return address, so it won't be a return address, the village's address will be the address, we'll have to put their return, if they wish, if they don't have to. So there'll be a message from Darryl, and all I would need, Darryl, from you is if you're okay with this, is to give you where they can call you. There's like, we see that line there, it says, Call Mayor Darryl Byrds at. The backside is just a real basic survey that I actually got from a municipality in Washington State, Washington, and it is a, and I took theirs, I pared it down to the five, what I thought were the five most relevant questions for our parks, because they have a city park system, it doesn't, doesn't work real well for us, but this does start working. So really what all of this does is we just say to people, we just ask people, how many members of your household fall into the appropriate age category, and the last year, how often have you used the park? And they tell them where they're located, because ten years ago, we had people who didn't know where the parks were. Then we had, what activities do you use it for, what additional amenities would you like to see? Doesn't mean we're going to give them to them, but it does, it's just, you don't even have to put it in there, but it's just a.
I bet Jake likes that second one under number four.
Ice skating rink?
And the litter box.
I think that bathroom's down there.
Oh, bathrooms are good, yes. Anyways, actually, you can get grants for bathrooms. Number five is, how would you rate the characteristics of the parks in terms of their cleanliness, landscaping, mowing, athletic condition, all that kind of thing, so.
You think that's a village.
It should not say city, it should say village there, so I'll fix that. But, so anyways, the idea with this is twofold, one is, it helps me, it would help me recruit people. It's all with the brochure, obviously, but we're looking for more people, one. And this is a recruit, this would be a recruiting tool. Number two, Darryl had talked about revising the comprehensive plan, and the section of the parks in there, this would help make, update that section. Because again, we're tenured out, so there's certainly room for, well, at least I think there might be room for comment. And our parks, I think, are the best, I personally think they're the best that ever been, so I think we're going to get a good comment back here, but it would help us get direction if people want to see something in the future. And if we can't get them to sandbox, then we can't get them to sandbox, but, you know, we'll all play nice in the sandbox. So anyways, if you want to make a decision this night, that's fine, and, but if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them, so.
It's good, though. I like what you've done.
Do we have a vehicle to get this out to the community?
They have to be, I, only thing, what we did ten years ago, we sent them to Water Bill, so we don't have any Water Bills, we don't have any.
Well, we got a sewer.
As far as I know, we don't.
Commercial?
I need to.
Commercial.
Yeah, we don't have a way to get it to the residents.
Okay.
So the answer to your question is, the only thing I can see is actually walking into the houses and dropping them off.
What did you mail in on the Parks and Rec?
We could.
You could put together, the other option would be to put together a newsletter, and to have this as a page in the newsletter.
It's good, Jake.
Because we talked. The one thing about, the one thing about your return is, to give you an idea, we only received about, a little over three hundred back ten years ago, so the mailing will be, I mean, and again, it's up to you, I want to do it, but it's just, but the mailing would be, you're going to get a lot of, you're going to spend a lot of mailing to get a very little back percentage wise. If they were delivered, not that it, not that I, not that I want to walk all the streets, but if they were delivered, the effort put into it wouldn't matter what you got back. Whatever you got back would be gravy.
Yeah.
So, otherwise, the only thing I can see is sending a newsletter out and including this in it, maybe that's an option, because the village hasn't done any sort of newslettering for.
Long time.
A long time.
What would it cost to deliver, like, an insert to the penny saver? Or is that, would that be an idea, an alternative?
It might be, certainly could look at that. They don't like half sheets of paper, though.
No, they don't.
So, it could be reformatted, but I mean, they don't, but they don't like half sheets of paper. That I do know. They want full sheets. And this, the idea of this one was to have, so we're saving money on the paper, because you basically cut them in half, so. Because I've always cost, cost, I've always tried to be conscious of the fact that the paper is the big part of the, I mean, that becomes a major expense if you're talking lots and lots of copies.
Is there, I'm sorry to interrupt, is there a possibility? I don't know if we even have a targeted email list or, or, or.
Could go on Facebook.
Survey Monkey?
Yeah, do a Survey Monkey thing where it doesn't cost anything, right?
Yeah.
But you got to inform people about the Survey Monkey?
Right.
It's a great idea, by the way, but it's just, how you, how you get them to go on to the Survey Monkey becomes the challenge. Although we do have the vehicle, we can use the Facebook page, I mean, that's, that's a possibility, and Facebook has, I think, 281 likes.
Probably, with that, like, getting the people, there's no educational aspect of it. People that are on the website or on the Facebook page already know about the village, more likely are already know about a lot of the parks.
True.
You're not going to educate anybody else.
Right, right. The whole point of this, that is a good point, another point of this is to educate people about the fact that parks are there. Because, you know, we, we, every reason to try to get them to see, I mean, they obviously know about Veterans Park, I think, but they would, but they would know, have a better idea about the other ones, too. Even the ones in their own neighborhood, you'd be amazed how many people you go to, like on Holly Drive, that don't know there's a park up the street, or you are on South Link, or you're on Lincolnshire, and it's like, that's a small walk-in, they don't, they don't even know that it's there, so, you know. But Lomarette's a great service for all of the Lomarette track, but usually, what I find is, when you're over there, people are usually on, in there, or the people who directly are around on that, on the Urquoy, but it's, they'll, obviously, it's really good access to everybody on Mohawk or on Pontiac as well, so.
All right, so we'll need to brainstorm a little bit about vehicle to deliver it.
Okay, and you want to.
And you're going to make some changes to it.
Yep, and give you back a, give you back a, more of a preliminary copy with all the stuff, but more of that. Okay? And I won't wait, I'll probably wait like less than a week to get it back to you, so, because we got to get a meeting of the park committee together. All right, Jake?
Jake's got a question.
I hate to really suggest this from bringing up, but.
No, that's okay.
But for Veterans Memorial Park and Harmony Park, should there be a little slip in there perhaps, if they're available, like the gazebo and the, the band shell are available to rent?
Yes.
Or utilized, you know, on a limited schedule, obviously, because of the things going on down there, but they're available, would that be appropriate to put it in there?
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine. I, we were going to, I was going to, I was going to ask the ladies in the office to let me see the forms for them, because I don't know what the, I don't know what the rental form even looks like.
The Harmony Park does not have a rental. But Veterans does, but it takes twenty-five dollars or whatever for it. Nobody's done it, as opposed to renting the community center here, per hour, and you can have additional after that. What I saw in the office was just a form that had a, maybe a deposit, it isn't a deposit holder, but then a deposit, but then twenty-five dollars all day at Veterans and nothing at Harmony. So, that was something that was brought up, that we can consider for the future in terms of fees and, you know, for those, for those two facilities to, you know, come up with something that would be appropriate, especially down at Veterans, if they're using electric and they're going to be there all afternoon, and they have a couple of groups and they're going in for twenty-five dollars, you know, maybe something we can consider considering. But yes, I mean, putting on there that they can be reserved.
Yep.
You know, then once they come in to do that, then they'll find out that, yes, okay, here's a cost for deposit and whatever.
So would you like me to, like, might make the language something like this, this, these, something like for the band, the band shell is available for rental, please call Village Hall for details, that kind of thing, but.
Please contact Village Hall.
Yeah, okay, get to that.
Band shell and the gazebo.
And the gazebo, same thing, if gazebo's available for rental, please call Village Hall.
Rental or reservations, or, we said that there's nothing on the.
They want to call through reservation.
Reservations.
And then at that point, they can be informed as to what we come up with.
Want to get the language better?
If you don't have a rental yet on Harmony.
Yeah.
And I did turn off the, I turned on the appropriate strip equipment. I did not get a call for the darkness over there.
Sorry to dominate the evening here a little bit, but I just wanted to let you know that, are you, anybody else anything on that? Because I'll, like I said, I'll update the, I'll update the brochure, get a copy, I will give you a file, like a preliminary on the survey soon. The, Darryl asked me to give you a report on the depot, Carl, myself, and Bill were up there, what, two weeks, a week, two weeks ago, and just want to, I just have to report to you that the wood is in extremely good shape. We were shocked how good it is. The wood in the barns are, is, is very dry, it's doing really well. The wood outside has had virtually no problems at all under the tarps, so it's, it seems to be, they seem to be holding up well, as far as the condition of the wood goes. As far as the plans for the wood go, we are investigating something right now off of North Avenue. It probably will take some time, but it's, but it's one, but it's, looks like a pretty good possibility, but it's going to take a lot of people coming together, and if any of, if the parks don't all come together, it might not work out, but we got to have the dedication to put the parks together, so. So that's where we are right now, as far as the update goes. But good report that the wood is in good shape, and it's, it's doing okay with the village, so, and.
Can't believe I dragged it.
Yeah, it was really good. Bill was very happy with it as well, and Bill knows more about that wood than anybody, so. Judy asked me to quickly give everybody a, you're getting these in the mail as well, I just mailed them today, unless I've already, this one, Carl, this is the Harmony House has, we're having a recognition for the Harmony House Landmark Status on Tuesday, August 15th. The plaque is in, okay? The plaque is in, and the plaque is going to be attached to the, somehow, we're thinking maybe double sided tape right now in our store, to the building, and it will, so we're asking the rest of the people if they want to attend the ceremony. It is a six-thirty on Tuesday, August 15th, and the Harmony House has been appraised, but I went to their meeting last Tuesday, and they were very happy about it, so I'm hoping to get some of the course in the Genesee there. All the Grange members, or many are getting the invitation as well, so you're all invited, of course, hopefully you'll be there, and it will be, it'll be a fairly, we're talking less, probably a half hour ceremony, because the HBC's got to be, all of our members have to be back here by seven-thirty, because we're having our public hearing on the, where are we going to have a public hearing? On the Rob Cemetery Landmark, Landmark Status. So, Don, are you coming to that meeting?
What meeting?
That's the, that's the answer.
The one, the one for the public hearing for the.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wasn't asked to.
Okay, is, is Dave, is somebody coming? Is a lawyer? Well, I mean, we're having a, we're having a public hearing, so it might be good for an attorney to be present.
Okay.
Can you do it real quick? Shouldn't be long. Can you do it real quick? Shouldn't be long.
Sure.
Is it okay if he does it?
Okay, I'll put it on my calendar.
Because I don't know that we should, I don't know if we should conduct the public hearing without somebody there to tell us if we're messing up, because we may have messed up before, so let's not do it again.
When, when would you set that up for?
It's seven-thirty on the fifteenth.
Right after this, right?
Yes, our idea was to do this at six-thirty, then we're all gonna figure it'll be a half an hour, we'll probably spend fifteen minutes talking, then we're gonna race back here to the public hearing. So, under the historic preservation, um, section of the code, um, we're required to collect information about the landmark status, so I'm assuming that's what the public hearing really will be about, is collecting the information and probably putting the information on the record. I, I don't know, I mean, I've read that, I've read this section many times, but it's, it's, it's different than a normal public hearing because of what it says, um, but, uh, anyway, that's the plan for the night. So, but, more happy note is really is the more celebratory note is, this, this, this recognition, so hopefully, hopefully you can all be there. Okay.
Thank you.
And Judy, do you want me to take, do you want me to ask maybe about the other things?
Sure.
You did, okay, all right, so Judy and I were talking, and the Historic Preservation Commission has classically, yes, I know it's gonna sound strange, I have all of these brochures, and I've been, and I've been kind of in charge of it. So these are the two brochures for the Historic Preservation Commission. I'll go through why there's two, because I know it's kinda strange. So I know you mentioned you wanna see if you can get copies.
Yeah, those are the ones that I was saying too, that we used to have them, remember the Village Hall, you look at, they're, they've been in there for all years, don't you?
Okay, so, the, uh, the, the one that we typically, the one that's the typical one is this one, that has the, that's a, this is the half feet. And, uh, all I did is adjust it, it's the same one, I had to redo this like a year and a half ago, because the, um, it wasn't, the other one was, uh, the four, the layout was difficult. So, this one's a, this one's got a different simplified layout to it, but the same information, and then the back of it, what we've done in the past is, all the historic landmarks are in the back page, so now it has the Harmony House on it. And then we've kept updated with, we've kept updated with the, uh, the members of the Historic Preservation Commission, and, um, any place where the village board appears, obviously, it keeps updated too, so. So this one's been around for a while, this one is an even, I, this one may be slightly even older, because this one is basically about, well, this one talks about, you know, the structures and local landmarks, that this one talks about why historical preservation is important, and it gives context on it. Frankly, I like some of the pictures better, and, um, so this is a different, so it's a slightly different focus, that's why there's two of them. So, uh, that's, that's that.
Thank you, again, sir.
Like, oh, so I guess Judy, you'd have to, you'd have to figure out how many we want, I don't know how many we want to get copied, but.
I don't care if we just start, um, fifty each, and then we can start getting them, because I used to put them, I didn't always get them, I mean, I had them out in there.
So is there anybody, I mean, um, is the board okay with that?
Would these go into that packet, put those into that packet, into the park?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, these were the things that we were talking about that would go in that.
And then there'd be, and then we'd probably wanna have, um, then we'd probably obviously wanna have some with Village Hall, so.
Village Hall, Chamber, um, yeah.
This should be historic, by the way, instead of historical.
Yeah, I'm gonna change all that, make it consistent, Carl, because I noticed that too, I've been inconsistent in what I call that, sometimes it's in the Historical Preservation Commission, but historic is the word to do it, so.
So I don't even touch, anybody, is that okay with everybody, fifty?
Are these black and white, are they going colored?
Yeah, these are, well, they're, they were originally in black and white, they can be put on color, but actually, historic, um, in the past, what these have been done, have they been done on cream colored paper?
Yeah, which, yeah, well, we have.
Rather than making them colored copies, they're cream, they're black and white, I.
We have a lot of that paper.
Yes, like parchment paper.
Yeah, but we have a lot of it, and I think it may be back in the small room.
Okay, so that would be.
Maybe that, or you have some of it.
I just looked through my box, and I think I can find a suitable.
Obviously, I'm charged for that though.
I just put it on regular paper, I think.
Well, the.
When you find it here.
Yeah, no, I'm glad, yeah, I'll use it.
No, because it looks good, it actually does.
It looks a little classier.
Yeah, it is.
It looks more historic on it, that paper.
Historic.
But if we have the paper, we could use the paper until we run out, and decide we wanna do that, that's a, that's a logical, so we did, we already have, we already have the paper. So, you think some of it's in the file cabinet?
It may be in the file cabinets, and I, I know there was some, and you say you gave it to Susan, because I know she used some of it last year.
Yeah, I looked through my whole frog up stuff today, I didn't see that.
Garden tour, two years ago.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
I'll find out.
All right.
I will find out.
Okay. Is everybody okay, or?
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I got stuff to take down.
Moving on to, uh, those board business, we were not able to, um, approve these, uh, claims and warrants last week. We were not able to approve them, and I did ask, and we did not have a special meeting to do so, because, um, all but one of them could have, could wait until tonight, so. I put them over, I know that Carl, you did, and I believe Al did, you definitely had, you were ready to do that, but, um, the only one that I had a particular, um, issue with, and I have sent out a memo to the board, as well as to all of the staff, and that was for a reimbursement that came in for, um, a general rather than for the receipts. And I have dealt with that, so, um, I have no other issues on it, so.
On page three, I just wanted you to know what banjo I used for.
After, what was that?
Page three, um, second from the bottom, Tenco Industries.
Oh, banjo, I think those are just eye molds, I believe. Oh, my, I don't freeze.
Oh, yeah, those are, um, hooks on the back of the gate on the dump truck, and for.
Oh, hooks on it, okay.
They ripped off.
We will banjoize what?
For some instrument.
It's because if you look at it, it's like the shape of a banjo, you got your hook, and then you got your small, it looks like a banjo.
Oh, okay, okay.
It was like the time that, uh, John Carnavale went out to, um, Tractor Supply and got mustard boots, and I questioned that one. For the, um, for the plow, I think, or whatever.
Mustard boots.
So, if, uh, did I have no other, um, comments on it, I will entertain a resolution to approve, motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I make this one.
I'll second it.
Trusty Lawward?
Aye.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Trusty Abalito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion pending.
Okay, um, Jake?
Yes. Um, we've had a, uh, pretty good success last year getting through the mini bid process for the vehicles, um, and then just a little problem getting them delivered to us. This year, it seems to have, well, I don't know if it's switched around, because we haven't got to the point of even ordering them yet, um, it's kind of a mess, the, we're looking at the three vehicles again. We do have for W-seven replacement, which is W-seven's one of the dump trucks, the older dump truck, um, we did, when we got that seven-fifty, the smaller dump truck last year, it did everything we needed it to do, um, and worked out really, really well. So we're looking at ordering, it's a class seven truck, looking at ordering that class of a vehicle again, we put out the mini bid for that, basically the same as what the, the truck was last year. Uh, the delivery delay on that one was because of, you know, making up the transmission to the DTO and the drive and making everything work together, which they did a good job, um, but they just said that Tenco was the, uh, aftermarket company on that, and then work out the details on it and find things that worked. That being said, we do have that, and the, we've got five bids on the mini bid system, I don't know if you recall what the mini bid system is, or do you want me to run through it quick?
Well.
I had copies, I'll talk fast. All right, we have seven bids, um, mini bid system's basically, they used to have bids either in county bid or New York state bid for vehicles, where they go out and kind of pre-qualify a bunch of different suppliers. Right now, Chautauqua County and, well, Chautauqua County ran out, but Onondaga County does a similar thing, where they have, I think, fourteen different vendors, that they kind of pre-qualify or work out a deal with, and here's what you're gonna give us, so much off the MSRP for the, for the vehicle, and then so much off the, um, aftermarket items. Mini bid kind of works similar, with the state is pre-qualifying people, and they're, but they still incorporate the bidding and the competitive portion of it. You submit something to, off the OGS, there's, off the General Services, and it's always OGS, they just put it up online, advertise it, you know, email out to the, um, suppliers, say any of their stuff on, that, you know, that you're authorized to sell, and they give it about ten days, and then when they get done, they collect the bids, uh, there's forms for the fillouts that you're comparing, everything's in the same format, kind of. There's forms that come back, they email those to us, we're able to review the bids, and then what we usually do is ask for build sheets, and then from those build sheets, make sure that they met the specs. Um, and then we award a bid, there's reporting that we have to do on it, or throw them all away, or whatever we have to do. W-seven, the, the dump truck, it's very similar to last year's, um, the lowest bidder was international, um, did not meet the specs, it was, um, the plow was not what we, what we specked out, what we were looking for, not just the name brand, but the, the whole setup of the plow where it was. In fact, one of the items that we questioned was the ability, you know, on a narrow village street for the wing to telescope in and out, they said, yeah, it does, but you, they didn't ask for hydraulic telescoping, so manually telescoping in and out, I guess, which, I don't know exactly how that would work out when you're following with it, but I don't suspect it will. So, um, not for just that reason, there's a few other things, but it didn't meet the spec, so we went with the next lowest, which happened to be the same truck that we got last year essentially. But that was a, that was from Van Bortle, not from Webster Ford, uh, Van Bortle was the next lowest bidder, and they met the specs, and I would like to recommend that we award to them, um, and I don't know if we wanna put it on for the next meeting, or if we'll do it here, or whatever you guys wanna do. But that was Van Bortle Ford, that was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy-four cents, and that's for the cab, you know, obviously the cabin chassis, and then the dump box, and then the plow, the wing, the frame, the hydraulic motors, all those things. All the stuff that goes on afterwards is usually about the same, maybe even a little more than the actual truck itself, so it's, uh, we find that interesting, the truck comes in, maybe sixty-eight thousand bucks, but then it's another seventy thousand dollars to make it useful. So, um, that's, that's that truck, so we can put that on. The other trucks, very similar to last year, we specked out, you know, based on what we had, you know, in the budget, we specked out a pickup truck, part of the vehicle replacement plan, a pickup truck, and a, um, a platform, or a flatbed truck, uh, with a dump body. The pickup truck, we only got one bid, and it didn't meet any of the specs, um, you know, there was, we just, we said that we didn't award on that one, we, there was nothing else on the bring to the board for that. The platform truck, we have four bids for, one of them that I think would've met the specs, but it was a twenty-seventeen, not a twenty-eight, two thousand eighteen, we already have a seventeen, so we didn't wanna do that, the other ones, the box was too small, or they, they did the wrong thing, we wanted single rear wheels, and they're providing dual rear wheels, none of those met the specs. So we talked to Van Bortle, and we just got something literally, you know, what, five minutes to seven, um, and I was able to see it and print it off, we wanna review that some more, that was utilizing the Onondaga County bid, which does have piggybacking provision, as long as it's been bid, according to the General Municipal law one oh three, and it has a provision in there where others can join onto it, you can, that satisfies the requirements of the, of the bidding. So we're looking at that, if we can get that up, the Onondaga County bid, there's clarification, I wanna review it some more, um, so maybe at the next meeting, we'll try to bring that one up, but I'd like to, whenever we can, get the other, the big truck on. I think that was it for the vehicles, this year, we're gonna keep our vehicles until we get the new ones, because I think that'll work out way better than getting rid of the cars, uh, that didn't work out so great last year, um, but, you know, we luckily had a, a pretty easy winter until, you know, a couple weeks after, or a week after we got the trucks, so it worked out good, and we were able to test it, so. Um, I don't know, do you have anything to add? So we're still, we put the, put the, and this is one thing, we put the pickup truck back on in mini bid, and it's due Thursday, so we should probably receive Friday or Monday, we'll get the results from OGS when they send them, send them over to us, and we start evaluating. That was pretty straightforward, I don't know why we, we only got one, one truck, one of the difficulties is trying to provide enough information, but not get too much, because I don't know, but the, you know, packages and the codes and what all the things are, so we're trying to save, basically, why I'm on a pickup truck with a, um, you know, the power.
The basic equipment, yeah.
Well, and it, one of the things, I'm glad you brought that up, one of the things, I got the basic equipment last year, I mean, science getting beat up constantly when I go to the passenger window to talk to the guys, and then they make me come around, because there's no power windows, and I can't reach across, and it, um, I did some research on, on the vehicles, on the resale, and part of that vehicle replacement plan is looking at, you know, the pickup truck especially, if we can turn them over every three years, there's really not much cost, when we get thirty percent off, twenty-five to thirty percent off the MSRP on the truck, you can get that extra equipment to resale, and I did some runs on resales from a twenty-fourteen to see what they were going. One of the things we also looked at in, in the new pickup truck was the extended cab, so we went down to the auction in May, the extended cabs were getting way more, and they were way more popular, and had a lot more action on those than there was the regular cab pickup trucks. Many people want that extra little, not a big dual cab, but just that little extra room, uh, we could certainly, it's not gonna hurt us here, uh, especially doing some roadwork, more guys go out in one truck, and then we have less vehicles plugging up the road, but I'm really thinking of it more from my resale, when we go to sell it, it's a more desirable vehicle, and that extra, I think it was a thousand dollars difference in cost, on, on average, we're gonna get that back.
That's good.
Yeah, we'll get that back, well, I think it was fifteen hundred, but it came out to about a thousand a half, two weeks after the discount, um, and, you know, looking at Kelly Blue Book for similar vehicles, one regular cab, one extended cab, everything else being equal, you made that back, so.
Makes sense.
Especially with the power stuff, and then I don't have to walk all the way around the driver's side, and I don't wanna talk too fancy, because there's no power windows on it.
Boys do sweat, they have exercise.
Uh, Jake, if, um, bids come back, and they are not favorable, do you have an alternative you wanna go down to, like item number four, any priorities, um, or number five, is there an alternative to when you got money on it, or not?
Well, this, these were the bids, and they were, they were favorable.
You tossed all the bids out on your pickup?
Oh, on the pickup, yeah, there was only one bid on the regular pickup, um, and that did, and that came down to, basically, we wanted a regular pickup truck or a work truck with power windows, power doors, all that stuff. We looked at the specs on the pickup truck, and it was, there's a WT, which is a work truck, and an LT, I don't know what L's, maybe luxury, but an LT, and LT had all the power windows, power doors, and all that stuff, so I said, hey, we want a, a thirty-five hundred LT, um, or a three fifty LT, I've, they're all different colors, but basically, that line with the power equipment group or the power, power package. The work truck does not have, or the, the LT does not give an option, as stupid as it is, vinyl seats, and it does have vinyl floor with vinyl seats, we went back, that wasn't an option, it's something that he couldn't give us, but we asked for the LT, basically, what we wanted was, you should've, I guess, reading the specs and knowing what his craft said, what you really want is a WT with this package, that'll get you together. You did the LT, and it's a no, it's not available, you can't have, and vinyl seats will hold up, obviously, way better with people getting it out with dirt and things like that on them, I mean, we, worst case, you could look at the seat cover and things like that, but, um, especially turning them over, I think will be in good shape there, so. If they don't, we can always reject the bids, um, we can, we, it's such a, and then we reserve the right to reject any and all bids, um, in the, in, in the rules or the contract, it's really a contract that the state has with OGS, OGS.
A question, why, should you reject them all? Would you rebid, or would you go now, do you have another option?
Oh.
Move to, like, number four on your, on your wish list, which I said, prioritize one, two, three, well, three is your pickup truck, so if you don't get that, because you reject all the bids, do you have a backup you'd like to spend that money on in your replacement schedule that might be ready to go?
We have a lot of different things, we could.
Okay, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, I thought you had a different option for a supplier versus an option for the vehicle or the, the, what we're spending on, yeah, there's a lot of different, uh, different, you know, loaders, the biggest thing right now, I think, is the sidewalk plow, um, that we're gonna be looking, and we might even be looking relatively soon. I was talking to Chris about that and how we can manage that, and depending on where these guys came out, there is money that we did in the reserves, but obviously, if it's in the reserves, there's, we're missing a reference, and we did it for vehicle replacements, there's.
Well, I'm saying here, you know, the difference, you specked out a hundred and eighty thousand for W-seven, you're coming in a hundred and forty-seven, so you're talking about thirty thousand dollars difference there, and that's available, so I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, if you want, okay, well, I, I did warn everybody, I had coffee, but I, so, I was warning, so, I do have to go on.
Well, if you wanna put W-seven on the next agenda.
Okay.
I'll take it then, I do. And that is next week. Is that it?
I've got other stuff, if I can.
Does it tie into the next, uh?
No, and I don't, once Nancy starts talking, I'm, I won't have a chance. The, there was, Megan sent out an email today regarding the use of the park, there's a benefit for many, um, typically, on the bottom of the rental form, there's a, I think it was thirty dollars an hour, if there's a man, if there's electric, meaning you're, for, it says thirty dollars an hour for a man to unlock the box and then stand by.
Is that Harmony?
No, it was on the, on the sheet that she had for there, but.
That's, that's, okay.
I, I told her, I said, I, I wanted to kick it back, I wanna honestly just stay out of it, because it's my aunt, I don't think it's, I should mix it. I was going to be there anyway, um, and that was discussed earlier on. I want to be there anyway and I still have keys and we wouldn't have to pay somebody to stand by. Um, I don't know if we really ever, if somebody refuses to really stand by. We unlock the thing. I think it's usually a thirty dollar fee once, one hour. So, um, I'm, like I said, I'm going to be there. I gotta get tables and chairs for him anyway, uh, doing that. So I'm more than happy. I just wanted to see if Megan could have the direction that, that's not, because there was, she discussed the fee with him at a thirty dollar an hour fee during the thing, during the, uh, during the event that's supposed to be this Saturday, right? The fifth.
Yes, the fifth, twelfth to fourth.
If you needed somebody tactically to do that, I would be willing to do that.
Ready, set, yeah.
Yeah.
So either you or myself. I, I have no objection, uh, to waiving that for, for the benefit, I would say.
Yeah, I'd be there.
And I would hope that that is, is well-publicized because I would hope that our community would get behind, um, this endeavor and, uh, support it. It's, uh, it was a tough thing. I know another individual who went through something similar to that. But, uh, yeah, she needs our support.
Absolutely.
Oh, she's so tough. That woman just amazes me.
That's a plus, huh? That amazes me.
Yes.
Um, real, a couple of other things real fast. Um, summer help, obviously we're August and it has not been fun getting summer help. I think part of the issue is that we're ten dollars an hour. Um, and my son's got a old buddy that started McDonald's for ten seventy-five an hour. Um, I don't think people are interested. There's not many that are interested in working outside doing things. We haven't got many, uh, bunch of interest. It was up on the Facebook page and I think on our website. I think people had filled out something on the Facebook page saying, hey, why would you be a good candidate and what's your education in this? And they, basically I think they can tweet in an application, I think nowadays. Um, the office, I don't know. The office has sent back emails. We responded to those with emails saying, hey, you know, thanks for your interest for coming and filling out an application. And zero have made that effort to fill out an application. Um, we did have one, and I think I sent it out a few weeks ago, um, called Daniel Barnum, or Barham, I think you recognize the name.
Yeah.
Um, Will does not fall under the list of the anti-nebvisism policy. And regardless, he would be, I would suggest Daniel for STP, um, if we could do that. Um, and honestly, we'd be looking to, if we could, I know we don't like to vote during the workshops, but if we could, get him going so he's cleared to start. I, I thought about either Friday, starting him to come in here. John's not there this week, but trying to get him started Friday. So the short day, we can come in, get all this paperwork done, get his orientation, his safety stuff done, um, and go over that and then he can hit the ground running on Monday. Uh, actually Monday or Tuesday, because I think John's paying.
How long?
Uh, right now I have just till October first. Um, and I'm also, you know, my next thing was going to be Josh Wells, to extend Josh till October first as well. And he's been here a little over a year. So I'd like to see if we could bump him up to ten fifty. Um, he certainly, uh, he sticks around, he's been around, he works good, um, or works well. Is that the right way to say it? Works well. Um, and, you know, he, he, you know, you show him something once and he's out there doing it. And the flowers look really, really nice and he's been watering them. So, um, I'd like to see if you could consider those items.
What's your opinion?
Well, we need some help, so. And I know I'm only kidding.
You know him? I don't know if that's a good thing you should've said.
Never mind.
That may change my mind.
That was the next chair.
He was that close, wasn't he?
I was that close.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion that, uh, pick up Dan Barron, you know, started at ten fifty.
Oh, he would be ten dollars.
No, you don't get ten.
If you're going to make a motion, you should actually get the facts straight, sir.
You start setting.
All the time, you have no idea.
I made the motion.
And I'll second it if it's all okay. I'm looking at you.
Any discussion on that? I have, I have some, I have no public reservation to hire and extend. Um, I do however, want to have a conversation about where we start individuals in the future and what we raise Josh to. So I would not, I would vote to extend and to offer the position to Mr. Barron. But, um, in terms of what we do with Josh, I'd like to reserve that for a formal board meeting, um, and have discussion on him.
Very.
I think, how long has, how long has the ten dollars been in effect?
About summer help?
Yeah.
Two thousand and three.
You should be doing a market evaluation of that position, that position.
Exactly, exactly.
You know, I see that changed to the two thousand and three, I guess, fact, but, you know.
I, I really, I don't think it's, it's terrible. I think it's just, and I'd hate to spend too much. Um, I think, you know, I think just a little bit or even starting a tenant isn't terrible. And then having the opportunity, if they, if they have longevity, you know, for a seasonal position like that, to be able to provide a little something more, um, especially if you have one that we want to keep around and that works good, it's nice to try and incentivize.
Ever done any comparables to the other missed penalties if they have summer help?
Yeah, I was just going to say the, they talked to Blaine at the school on how we had no applicants. I think also because we, um, sent it out there too late. Maybe we do it earlier in the year. Because the school just hired about twenty kids with, and they pay nine seventy. Um, they did get, uh, gave me two recommendations and they called them. I got no answer back. Probably get there and get another job, but maybe we, I don't know when to do it. I don't know this year.
I think it was the end of May, early June when we did it.
Maybe we try like April.
Is the school all eighteen?
I don't think so.
Man, that's, that's a challenge. I think I'd like to keep eighteen. Um, I get where the.
Right now, uh, I'm about time you get started on the, and you're right, getting reparables, anything that we can.
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion? Now, I'm going to take a motion to, um, hire Dan Barron from Friday, which would be Sunday Friday, fourth, or the October first. On the agenda?
Seconded.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Long?
Aye.
Mayor Roger?
Aye.
Motion to pass.
Anything else? Oh, because we're not on.
What comes in?
We're holding that over.
Um, just wanted to, this, I guess, a, 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 something to think about. Mr. Meyer's not that convenient, Meyer's Marina or Mater's Marina. Um, this one was looking for an update or wanting to know, um, if there's any plans for the pump house building. The pump house is down in the Sandbar. Um, and he was, he was, I think he had a little west hand this year earlier on. They sent it back here. Um, I think that's going back, but I think he's, there's something that's out there. So maybe, um, maybe have on sometime where we have a, a discussion around his. Um, I told him I would ask him.
Well, again, it's something that needs to be done.
And, and back to this, this seasonal help real quick, one of the things that, that Nancy's been looking into is the, um, community service. Um, I know we've asked and sometimes, sometimes we, we will get approached by people, hey, I have, I have my favorite one, a kid that got bitten by a baby and he had to come in here and do so many hours in the community service. So we went down to Wellton, bring her baby up to Wellhouses for forty hours or eighty hours, I think it was. Um, but that might be a consideration to, to look at because there's people looking at themselves, their community service requirements. They have, I think at school now, even if the kids don't get their, with their baby, they have community service requirements. The problem, the problem with that is like they get back in the work, they're less than anything and like, uh, limited. But if it's, maybe we can get them in a park. If we get them in a park, we need flowers in the park. If we can, so we can do that, or do something. Um, I'm not opposed to that. So, um, if we're looking at that, we're going to try to have some more information on that. We have a program, you know, maybe even set up if we do this, or what they can do.
Well, and sometimes these kids get appreciation for things that they didn't have you for.
Right.
And it does make a difference. I know we had a couple of programs in the state. It, it does make a difference.
We need to have a discussion. We need to have a discussion.
I think one of the things that, that I brought up, remember was the, um, the workers' camp. That aspect of it, someone's here, even if it's not there. We have to, 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 we have to ensure in a way through that somehow. But I have to figure out maybe how it happens. So we put that all out. I just don't want to bring somebody here that, you know, let's say has a history of making support decisions and then decides that, hey, if I still might tell you, I can, I can work for a long month. So, you know, we're, we're just, I guess.
I think all of that is coordinated through Monroe County Probation Department. And individual municipalities and groups have gotten out of just saying, oh yeah, send them over here because there's liability issues and responsibility issues. It's all supervised and done through the Monroe County Department of Probation. And you do it all through them. You go out for your services to them, but you don't go to like Judge Corretary and say, oh, send them over here. Now, those are, they used to do that, they used to do that years ago. It created all sorts of problems. Okay, uh, let's move on then to the discussions. Uh, energy, wild, focal, the streetlights, um, any type of opportunity, folks who are through it, um, who had, um, who had, um, David, David Jones, Indian X. Um, and he talked about ten high-end tech points towards, um, in, um, in the community. And a grant, uh, grant actually, a reward of fifty thousand dollars if we need, and been on the list, at least four of those high-end tech. And one of them was, uh, changing, that was lighting, and a couple of them had, one was natural. And, um, and one of them being Cobra headlights. And, uh, if you had ten of them, change five, like fifty percent, they, um, that one, that was a challenge. You know, at least ten, at least, yeah. So one of the things that we have an op, an opportunity here, and that would be a problem to obtain is what, do you have, how many do you think, four hundred? We have about four hundred and seventy Cobra lights and a hundred and fifty something decorative And we do not, we have all sorts of, um, ownership in those lights. Some we have the lights or the, some just the poles or, and this would then give us the ownership of other cars.
Right, energy only on the Cobra head right now. We own the pole in the business district, energy only on the heads.
Yes.
And then we own the pole and the heads, I mean, the rest of the black, that's the poles, like Neil Village, Art Four, Wood Street.
No, that, those are both.
We just pay by power. So we would be putting all the Cobra heads and the heads.
The Cobra heads are basically, there's ones on the longer, the H M is on the longer. That's the one's fault.
They're looking, and looking through these pages after page, uh, lights that are included in the, on all of the streets through Village. Do we have or does our G and E have and provide you with a grid map or a map that has these lights pinpointed throughout?
There is, I don't know exactly where we got it from. There's one in, in, I would want all Nancy's, Nancy's office, Hannah's desk, uh, that is probably a snapshot from the eighties, the eighties, maybe early nineties. I was showing them, I showed them there for the streets. And then his other streets crew, they were marketed on there. They're kind of, they're color coded saying, hey, here's where the poles are and here's the, the different, you know, whether they're a hundred fifty watts or two hundred watts or I think a hundred twenty-five or something, whatever that type of light is. Um, that's, that is on a map and it, you know, kind of grew as, you know, say, hard on the sixty-nine and mark four, it grew, it was like, I don't know, it was something that they don't have on there. So, not really up to date on it.
Do you, you have a, this gentleman, or a positioning of all of these pages, like two pages of the lights?
Yeah, if you recall, a couple of years ago, Christine worked with a gentleman, um, name I don't recall, I think it was something through the rows. He went through and did the audit of all the streetlights. I think he had a check for about twenty-nine thousand bucks. Uh, that, from that audit, uh, they went back and looked at bills and went back and forced the G and E and spent the time. I don't know if we got a check or did it come out or we had a favor, we had a favor a while.
We had a favor.
Yeah, yeah, it was considerable amount in our favor. And so this should be a very good schedule of what we, what we have because they were just, I think it was two years ago and they were audited and, um, went, went through them all, so.
I have a couple of questions. The, um, the energy only service that they estimate on the third page, would that, um, would that significantly decrease if we were putting an L and E that is not, that's current rate, in terms of what they estimate we would currently be paying? So if we were to go through and replace, um, swap out what's there for L and E, like you have with all sorts of things, is that, is your take on it or not? I don't agree with you, so, the energy only service, I was, uh, yeah, if we're down here, I was talking to the, um, or, or does that not include, that just, uh, I'm not sure if that includes? The current annual charges, the sixty-seven that they mentioned there, um, does this, I'll, I'll put it this way, does this include the energy or is it mainly for the, um, rental maintenance, et cetera, um, in the discussion? Is that, is that, is that a take on it? With the energy, right? I'm trying to read that through and I think that that's, um, that that energy only service is estimated based on the current tariff rates, et cetera, here, so, um, so that would see maybe get a drop as well. We'll, we'll make that a change. Um, there would be no current, if sixty-seven thousand goes away. Correct, correct. Um, so, I guess it is a significant drop. Right, that goes away, but I'm looking at the nineteen, so the polar detriment piece would stay, but I'm looking at the thirteen seven. And I'm, that's, that's the energy charge I assume, so. That's what I'm asking, would that decrease if we were to go L E D? That should, I don't know.
One of the things I recall in here, one of the requirements of this would be the meter. Uh, currently there's, there's estimated, they say, there's, you know, like they have a hundred fifty watt bulb and it's on for this time of year. You know, seven hours, eight hours, that's, that's what you're, the paper estimated usage. When you take over the system, if there's no conversion to L E D immediately when you give over the system, that's the meter in certain locations. So you get actibles, um, and then you see when they're increased or decreased, I think, uh, what the actual is versus what's estimated. And then you see, I think, you can say, that's my thing. A lot, and there's, we had an hour that the users, then one, uh, what a regular, like a regular solar inverter. I don't want to, I don't want to create any, like, like, fair, but the criteria, so, I think, thirty of them. Uh, it was very, very little compared to that. I think you told, I figured people are about one fifth of the, so they put on right here, they put on, I was going, about one fifth of the, of the total of jobs.
You know, playing a thirty-five watt would be versus a hundred watt. I probably, so we involve the center decorative pole right now. Um, it's probably about sixty-five watt, I think. So, third of the, third of the cost. A hundred and fifty, just block Cobra heads, you'd be putting in about a, I don't remember the number, two to four eight or fifty-two watt. L E D head on there. So, yeah, things about there, they cost.
Frank, in a large portion of our bill, he was the one who wrote streetlight bills, a large portion of it though is the pole. Um, the, the, the charge for the wire, there's a charge for the pole, there's a charge for everything. All sorts of, uh, different charges. So that portion is obviously not going to be affected unless we take ownership of it. Um, and there's still going to be pole, or could be attached to their poles in certain areas, but certain areas will take over just with the wire that pulls everything. It's a thing about a lot of the master, that, that, where you pull out, number three, they're strictly for street lighting. Um, that may, uh, the power and all the services behind the house, if they run out, behind them, um, because they guarantee needs related, it's not a great idea. A good theory, but.
Those poles would be a hundred and seventy.
All those are marked outside, or no power.
Right, there's no secondary line, you know, just a hundred thousand, you just, you know, that would be on the pole, the Cobra heads and the wires.
I wonder if we've done that, the opportunity to, uh, print those, or green lights, or another company is coming through. They want to hang on those poles.
They don't know.
So we see on page, on the back of page, on page two, uh, so installation, identification, tag, and, uh, people. Who does, who does name poles, that's the R G N that has, um, like Cobra heads coming off of them, on them that were buying. There's air poles, because the electric won't. So then there's an identification on there that we own the lights, they own the pole.
Yeah, that's the way I was reading.
How about A, you guys, uh, looked at, what, how many fuses this connects with the installed? Because at every point, electrical interconnection with the R G N system, um, separate customer's equipment from the R G N system. Um, how many do we have? What's the cost of one? What's the cost of the pay basis? Because, um, we have to pass it in, we have to come up and B, we have any credit or form of security in case we don't get it done in two years. How long do we have to know?
Well, my take on that, when I talk to another company, that is a standard, so as long as we replace these lights, L E Ds, which we would do right away. When they replace that, they put that, either kind of. We just have to be sure we get that done in their timeframe, which R G N is holding. The company is coming in to do it, the lights, and if we don't get the lights.
How many, I don't know, how many different, um, R G N, all, uh, Cobra head lights are going to be different than decorative, or village, or, et cetera. Where you look at. Each one of those, we replace all of these lights, we go through these painters, and soon we will replace these most of them. Of all of them, whether it's natural power or not, but as you do that, you're saying that your, your computer disconnect, in each one of those, you're replacing.
Not connected, we just put one on the pole, just the one that are on the pole.
So this is done at every pole, every light?
That's right, I understand.
It's a few disconnect of every light.
Um, the way I was reading that is.
I have everything.
Is that, you know, play chance, right, with your power, main power and services coming out the back. There's going to be a line from out somewhere feeding a circuit of streetlights. I think it would be at that point, that one circuit is bad, and then you go down with this next circuit of streetlights, there's going to be one.
But driven down, driven down some of the streets, the chance track, and you look at the, the lights that they have, and you find a wire going from one light to the next, and then to the neck. And no electric line coming off the houses, so. I guess I would also then, the point of distribution to that system.
Right.
Therefore, at that point, it's reduced.
It would be at the B.
Yeah, because where it ties into their, their distribution system is that the disconnect area. I think, I always think about like Christmas lights, you can only go so far, and then you gotta plug that in, um.
So it's not every light bulb and every B, or that particular circuit?
Yeah, and the ones we're working on. There's no running R G N power, and that would be every light.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it's totally our system, a hundred percent, yeah.
And who does that?
Who does that? Whoever company we have, um, changing up the other.
And that's a bid process?
So, I suppose it depends on, what's the, what's the cost, estimated cost of switching all these lights to L E D lights?
Uh, most Cobra heads, probably. I don't really remember, so probably a couple hundred bucks a piece, and then there's nice third grants out there.
How long is it going to take you to get these nice third grants?
They don't take long. You deal with them. They don't take long. I mean, you'd have to pay for them all, probably, pretty quick.
But at this point, you don't know what the upfront cost is.
Oh, yeah, we got that. If, if we're looking at four hundred, there's four hundred lights and there were four hundred and twenty bucks a piece. You know, if that was the installed price, let's say, yeah, a hundred, six hundred, seven hundred grand, um, for the lights, place in the install, we'll be able to get that, that point. Because if you're just able to discuss purchasing a system, and now see, if you have some acceptance, you know, if you have some idea of what that's considering. You put your numbers together for what this will be, uh, to do that conversion, if we want to have a system.
So this savings is, has it's. So, after a period of several years, I'd say. After we paid off, they didn't know about it. Right.
We're moving through shortly. I think the reason we call it the fence company, you gotta figure out what the cost of the L E D is. Because you're doing, you're considering this, and I consider, considering versus a package yield. Well, if you're not going to go on though, then you gotta do the disconnect separately. You gotta hire somebody just to install those fuses.
That's right.
He's saying you don't have to do that if you do the L E Ds right away. And it sounds like the intent is to go right away to do the L E Ds then, once you all know streetlights. So it's each and each. If you're going to consider this, you gotta, you know, what's the overall cost going to be? And where's the money coming from? Because I don't think this was in this year's budget.
They wouldn't be this year either, you're going to have to do this, come to, my, 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 I don't know, she said it takes about six months to a year.
So they're looking, they're looking at, in favor of responding. Because as I look at the front of it, it, um.
From the data, but.
Yeah, this proposal will leave the vector for a hundred eighty days from May eighth. Right, which, which to November ninth. Drew, now, what are we doing? We were to look at this and say, you know, yes, we're in favor of it, that extends it, beyond a hundred eighty days. We have to.
We can get estimates on changing up the Cobra heads and the depth of lights, as for the next third grant on a rebate. We won't know that until we apply for it, with all the information. So basically, we can submit it, and they will let us know if they would be approved for it. So I was talking to my certa, talking to Dustin, he said that, um, usually with L E D streetlights, redo a building, and then you have to mount back because of the energy savings, which is usually minimal. While the streetlights, you've seen almost a hundred percent. About that, probably cost. This is going from a hundred and sixty watts to. Forty-eight. There are a couple Cobra heads out there that are four hundred. And we can not go down to, uh, thirty. The saving will be there, so these, they're going to give you a dollar amount for each fixture, and then a dollar amount for the other. We can get estimates on changing up the Cobra heads and the depth of lights, as for the next third grant on a rebate. We won't know that until we apply for it, with all the information. So basically, we, we can submit it, and they will let us know if they would be approved for it. Talking to my certa, talking to Dustin, he said that, um, off the street, which you've seen. Almost a hundred percent cost, that probably cost. This is going from a hundred and sixty watts to.
Forty-five.
Forty-eight. And we have a couple Cobra heads out there that are four hundred and fifty. And we can not go down to, uh, thirty. The saving, the energy is so huge, they're going to give you a dollar amount for each fixture, and then a dollar amount for the energy savings. So that's how you can close to a hundred percent. So we won't know that until it's.
In the favor of that, and then, you gotta consider, I mentioned this to Darryl, going forward, the village should always follow the streetlight facilities, so. Future maintenance, if somebody takes something and falls down, the village is responsible, not R G N anymore, for putting it back. And you have the right equipment to do that. You gotta truck it up, get it up there, swell it up, stuff. And if not, where are you going to get that? And sorry, help somebody.
You, you would contract with our G N E to come and make those repairs.
Well, okay, but that, if you do that, then that's a cost, that's a cost that you gotta. Private concern too. Also, uh, you, there are a couple of municipalities, um, that are doing this, and we might be able to set up an municipal agreement. In my conversation in August, at the mayor's, um, meeting, you know, somewhat centered around that, at least what I would bring up to them. Who has the ability, or who would have the desire to do that? You know, I don't know, Spencerport or Brockport, who did you talk to? Somebody in Spencerport, right? Um, and you have to find out, like, I don't know if Fairport can, because their, because of their, the nature of their electric company or whatever. But, um, that I don't know.
Do we have anyone that's, that has the ability to do it in our, in our.
We can have, obviously, we can have training going.
Besides karma.
But it's just a big fact of moving on such high power. I don't think anybody's really that comfortable with that.
Just, no, I'm just thinking if there's a revenue stream down the road with that.
I mean, we're, we're close with electrician right now, and it could be something where we could always borrow, I mean, Ontario has a bucket truck that we can use. Any model we need to, we all ask them, about what we'd be ready. So, could we can, that could be another option too.
So has Spencerport already done this, or are they looking?
They own our system.
So then they've gone through all of this?
One of the things we had years ago too, is Owen McEntee used to work, McEntee, McEntee? And he, he worked for R G N in street lighting, I imagine. He, I believe it was Hill, near Spencerport where he went to work. After that, he came into a board meeting, maybe ten years ago, um, maybe just a little less. I would like to reach back out to him and see, um, if we can get him, because he's, some of these, the, the ideas and the concepts are things that, you know, I don't think any of us are familiar with. Um, and how to, how to work this, and one of the possibilities, we had a discussion earlier today about, you know, about maintenance, about, you know, you know, being careful what you wish for, right? Now you got it, now what are you going to do with it? I know we had the discussion a long time ago about, you know, some park facilities, we can get a grant for it, but then we have to maintain it afterwards.
Exactly.
So even if they were to give it to us, or even with the spree, there's ongoing costs that would offset some of the savings that we're seeing. What are those costs?
I mean, since they've already been through it.
Yeah.
It'd be much better to, um, I mean, even for us to talk to them.
Yeah, so I'd love to try to get them into a workshop. I mean, we have till November, it's a September workshop coming up. See if we can get that person in. Maybe we can pick, um, pick the brains of some people, that L L P is one. It's a P and C G, Power and Construction Group, at Livingston Lighting and Power is a subsidiary of that that does a ton of work for R G N E. Um, but now, you know, now we're paying R G N to do it, and they're hiring somebody else. And my suspicion is that somebody else would be cheaper. We certainly aren't going to have the same purchasing power as R G N E. Um, but it might be something that, if, if others go out to bid for services like that, they're not set up in-house. Um, or could you do an intermunicipal agreement, where you pay another municipality, you know, like Darryl mentioned, at Fairport, how they're set up or how they're established. But could we have that type of agreement on a regular, you know, routine maintenance, saying we have bulbs out, or we have this or that? We tell these guys, and then have an emergency twenty-four hour service. Uh, you did mention over in when you talked to R G N, if there was a, an accident, and there's wires down, R G N would still come out and make it safe. My assumption, dealing with R G N, my home, is that there's going to be a charge associated with it.
Not for disconnect.
Not for disconnect.
Be a charge for disconnecting. They, they, but they told me it was by law, they have to make it safe.
Okay.
Okay.
There will be a reconnection fee, so I don't know if it's double the cost.
Those are, I'd be, I think, great things to, I love the concept, and I love the idea. And, you know, I certainly think there's enough people who'll appear, if it turns out that it is something that makes sense, that we can figure out how to make it work. But it's, uh, I think we are scratching the surface of it now, and are starting to scratch a little deeper, and, um, we need to get more.
Well, villagers have to figure out ways to save money. I mean, we've just got to come up with it, and we're just not going to be here.
And we pay a hundred thousand dollars a year in streetlights.
Yeah.
Um, and it's a huge impact on, on people, um, and a huge. Um, and it's a huge impact on, on people, um, and a huge kind of benefit to, to being in the village. But there is a, it's a hundred grand. It's, uh.
There was a lot of opportunity for maintenance, and the free, the first saving, fifty plus thousand dollars a year. We're not going to be spending that on maintenance. If we have to hire LLP, if we can't get anybody through IMA, you know, it's just, if a pole breaks or something, I don't know how much it would cost to replace a pole, but. It's not going to be fifty grand.
The percentages of poles breaking are, yeah.
Yeah. Even though that's.
It's not like it's going to take a long time to, having done that myself for a lot of years. Um, you know, there's only one Cobra lamp and one wire on each pole. Pole costs six hundred bucks, and then there's two hours to hook everything up, so it's not a big deal, you know? If they break the pole down, but in other instances, uh, you've got to think about storm damage, right? And, and load damage and all that. But if, if you think about how often we've had to go around and, you know, fix stuff, and it really looks like broken poles and stuff, it never happens.
One of the things that I would, you know, rather lean on you two with your experiences to try to find out, and maybe you don't know, it's Public Service Commission things, or the rules changed, but. Is there requirements, and some of those poles don't last forever. You know, if the transtrac's fifty-five, sixty years old now, is there a requirement that poles can't, or they have to be inspected every year, and somebody has to do that?
They're inspected by a, a company called OSMO, OSMO. And they'll do their, the base of the pole inspections to see if they're, um, spongy or rotten.
Okay.
And then they put their stamp on the pole, it's, it's O S M O. And then in the middle of the stamp is the year they inspected it. And I think it's every five years.
Five year, okay.
Yeah.
But that would be another cost, and we just, we'd have to figure out what it'd be for them to come in and do a survey.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, a certain amount would have to be replaced probably on a schedule, and, and just, I just want to, you know, there's a lot of stuff.
Like our vehicle maintenance now that we have, yes, scheduled.
I might add as part, as far as poles go, also that, I'm sure everybody that lives in the village is familiar with two poles in your backyard, one right next to each other, all around the whole building.
Yeah.
That's a result of the OSMO inspection. All the new poles are in place, and the electric is transferred. All that remains on the old poles is the telephone and the cable TV. So you've got hundreds of poles that have to be removed by the telephone company, usually the telephone company, because cable TV doesn't take poles out. So the phone company's got to come in and get those out of the backyards, and I can tell you, it's a long drawn out process. It's not a big priority for them.
I understand, I, I, I thought I heard that the last, the last person off as a.
LPL, yeah.
Oh, is that LPL, okay. Yeah, so.
And it's usually telephone is the last one. And sometimes they just, the alignment will go up and just transfer the cables off, you know, and then they pull the pole off. But other times, there's underground facilities that have to be transferred, and all that kind of stuff. It's, uh, yeah, it's, uh, very time consuming. So, you know, if it's, it's off the subject sort of, but it's something that we should all take a look at pretty soon. And I have time to exit, the phone company, that might be able to get a little pusher in there.
And we had an issue, and that was a concern of yours for that.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah. I should have to go to the other side.
So then it's, it's like we, so we own the, we buy the facilities from RGNE. And then going forward, we have to buy the lights, get the service disconnect, or the fuse service. And then how much do the lights cost, and how much cost would it replace that, or, yeah, replace the company? And then all that would be next on the agenda. So here's what your bottom line is today, is a savings of forty-seven, two seventy-six. It's going to increase when you, it increased significantly after you turn on the LED lights. And that, that significant increase will cover the cost of the installation of the lights.
Um, Doug, what, um, what is the course of action? Will we need to go to a public hearing to, uh, get input in terms of purchasing these lights? Or is it just something that?
It depends, it depends on the cost and how you're financing it, whether it's subject to a public hearing or not.
So if we were to ban it or grant it or whatever?
You're going to borrow the money to pay for it, then you would.
We were looking at reserves to pay for it, um, looking at a two-year payback, just in terms of the savings that we have from buying the system, and, um, not in terms of maintenance or upgrading or whatever. That would tend to wash that, uh, that purchase, then you could put that back in, in essence, if it would be available. But yes or no? I don't know. In other words, if we're, if we're purchasing this at ninety-nine, and in two years, we're coming up with ninety-nine or a hundred thousand. It is paid for by the savings that we have in terms of maintenance costs alone in that two-year period. So what's expended would be then, what I call it, and that, but, you know, we would, we would make that back in, in our savings. Now, we look beyond that in terms of a hundred and twenty thousand or more, in terms of changing out all of the lights, and hopefully get grants and all of that that goes with it, so that that cost becomes very minimal. So by making this change, the village should be able to recoup funds spent, maybe within a three-year period. With the grants, with all of the money to change the LEDs, as well as the savings that we have in terms of maintenance costs. And then from then on, in a long-term perspective, the village is saving a lot of money. I think that, I'm, I'm trying to, you know, residents want to ask, well, you know, you're, you're spending a hundred thousand dollars on the system. Are we going to get that back? And yes, you should be able to get it back in maintenance costs within a period of maybe two years.
Yeah.
And then what about the outdated LED that you're putting up front? Can you get that back with the grants and, and, and the energy savings if you're cutting it to one-third in terms of the energy that we're paying for? Are you taking that back? We, we have to, we have to present this to, to the community, you know, so.
And I think now that we're able to discuss it, um, I think that's, I'm, I'm trying to figure out which way to shake my head, whether I agree or not right now. I think that we have this information, we can look at a bill and see exactly what portion. The way I'm looking at this, if we've got a hundred thousand dollars for easy numbers in streetlights a year, and by purchasing this system, we're going to say forty-seven. Um, you know, which are, you know, forty-seven percent of what our costs are. Um, we've still got, you know, fifty-three percent of it there, so we're still going to be spending fifty-three grand on the energy-only portion of it. But that energy-only portion also includes where we have certain connections to their system, their maintenance. So that's why I want to get at is where, or then what's the cost of ownership, I guess? What are the costs of us, you know, maintaining it? Certainly, I think it's, in some respects, cheaper if we maintain our own stuff, but we don't have the equipment or the, the history to be able to maintain our own stuff. I certainly think we have the capability of it, that might be a further investment that we have to look at, or another contract. You know, if it's a forty-seven thousand dollar savings, but we have a contract with LLP, and they say, yeah, we'll do that for sixty grand a year. We're going in the opposite direction. And a portion of it that goes to energy is, you know, we'll hit the bills and send them out and try to break one down. The portion that goes to energy is really not that big, surprisingly. And it varies depending on the time of the year, obviously, the winter, but it's, it varies, um, minimally. And it's not, you know, if we get a five thousand dollar bill, it might be, I got to look, but I thought it was about four hundred bucks in energy. Most of it's other stuff, so, um, that's why I want to see what those other stuffs are, and exactly what house is going to break down. And then even if, you know, if it's four hundred dollars in energy, and we save seventy-five percent of the cost, we're still paying a hundred bucks. Um, but it's, and, you know, we're saving sixty percent, I put on a lot smaller amount than we're looking at, so. Does that make sense?
You know, the maintenance, the maintenance alone is going to save us a tremendous amount. With the hundred and eighty black decorative poles that we own currently, I can't remember. We, we change the bulbs and the sensors constantly. I mean, they say they're rated X amount of years, but I doubt it, because with the high pressure sodium, the LED, you're going to get easy fifteen years out of them bulbs. Now with the sensors, I don't know how often those last, if they're just as good. But maybe we need to look in, and even if we have to do change on the sensor, and something we do definitely do ourselves, with Ontario bucket truck, we can change the sensor. Sensor no problem. But I don't know how long the sensors are rated for.
I guess I would ask you guys to, um, continue your research and costs, your help with in cost and health, in terms of.
I think start getting estimates. There's one on in favor of, I met him in Nycow two, two years ago. He's down in North Carolina, and he impressed me because he went around the room to all the other superintendents and asked what style of light they put in, a lot of them on their own system, which surprised me. And, uh, he would, they would say, I put this model in, and he would say, I did it for three hundred fifty dollars. And I'd say, wow, I, I paid nine hundred. And he was way cheaper, so I'd like to give him a call too.
And myself.
The more information we can get.
It's something to do with New York, so. Okay.
So here are more, coming weeks or months. Um, next, uh, next workshop, we will have a presentation by Clement Chung. Um, he will give us an update on the sewer treatment, or wastewater treatment, right? And some of his findings, somewhat, um, somewhat inconclusive in that not all of the operation has been a hundred percent functional, but he will give us an update on that. So that'll be coming, uh, in our next workshop, uh, September, beginning of September. Okay. Um, let's see. Our next meeting is, um, next week, Thursday, regular board meeting. Any other items anybody would like to bring up tonight?
No, just want everybody to try to get down there for Penny on Saturday, twelve to four. It's really, really important.
All right, it is eight forty-nine, and I'll entertain a motion to the judge.
I have a motion.
Trustee Albelito. Trustee Lancey.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Mayor Myers.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you all.